That's not me.
Okay. Did you get any hands pointing? I'm so sorry. You're okay.
That's everybody.
Yes, I. Oh, he told me that, yes.
We're scrambled. Ask you to just switch it between something for me. Here. Turn this off. We're going to be on this camera only.
Okay.
And here we're going to watch where it is. I'm going to start off with this precept. And when we get to the full council, go to this.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. I think this is working. Okay. My name is James Kropinski. I am the Newington Town Clerk. And I would like to welcome, welcome everyone to the 29th Annual, well, Biennial Municipal Organizational Meeting. This evening, we are swearing in newly elected officials from the last municipal election. So in accordance with the Newington Town Charter, Chapter C 403, I hereby call this meeting to order at 7:02. Sorry, 7:04. On November 14th, 2023. If you would all please rise if able for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Am I in good shot, Sue? Nope, nope. Am I in good shot?
No, you're not.
I'm not. Excellent. How about now?
Yes, you are.
That's better. Okay. At this time, we will start with the Oath of Office. I will be calling out your names alphabetically and as you are listed on the ballot. We'll start this evening by swearing in the new mayor. I would ask John Trister to please come forward. Please raise your right hand. Say aye, state your name, and then repeat after me.
Aye, John Trister.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge according to law.
That I will faithfully discharge according to law.
My duties.
My duties.
As mayor for the town of Newington.
As mayor for the town of Newington.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
To the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. Can have a seat at the dais. It's a little hard when they have all that clapping.
All right.
Now, we're going to be swearing in the newly elected town council members. Gail Bedraco. Stand right here. Kathy Gonzalez was sworn in earlier this afternoon, so she will not be attending, but she is online with us. Tim Manke. Going for that camera. Stand right next to her, other way. There you go. I know, it's weird. It's just the way the cameras go. Nagel.
Mitch Page.
Matthew Plord.
Kim Rada.
A.J. Tinakas. All right. Similar to what the mayor, I'll ask you all to raise your right hands. Say aye, state your name, and I'm going to ask you to speak it into the microphone, so I'm going to pass it along to you.
Aye, Gail Bedraco.
Aye, Tim Manke.
Aye, Dave Nagel.
Aye, Mitch Page.
Aye, Matthew Plord.
Aye, Kim Rada.
Aye, A.J. Tinakas.
Now, repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
Discharge according to law. Town council member. For the town of Newington. To the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations. Feet on the dais. All right. At this time, we will be swearing in the Board of Ed members. Mary Beatrice. Brittany Carr. Anne Hollerin. For this, that's okay. Tony Mealy. Usually I go check for people, so. Tim Newton.
Amy.
Oh, Parati.
Sam.
Sharma. Jessica Weaver was sworn in on Friday and is traveling in Iceland at this time, and I believe she is on with us as well. Lastly, Anastasia Yop. All right. As I was, as we did with the town council, ask all of you to raise your right hand, say aye, and state your name into the microphone as we pass it along.
I, Mary Beatrice.
I, Brittany Carr.
I, Sean Hollerin.
I, Tony Mealy.
I, Timothy Newton.
I, Amy Parati.
I, Sam Sharma.
I, Anastasia Yop.
Now, repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge according to law.
Board of Education Member. To the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations. All right. At this time, I'm going to ask the newly elected member of the Board of Fire Commissioners to come forward. Brian Bubba Whalen. Hello, sir. Stand this way. Raise your right hand. Say aye, state your name, and repeat after me.
Aye, Brian Whalen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge according to law.
That I will faithfully discharge according to law.
My duties as a Board of Fire Commissioner member.
My duties as a Board of Fire Commissioner member. For the town of Newington.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
My ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, sir. At this time, I'm going to ask the newly elected constables to come forward. Fred H. Callahan III. Mike Saroy is not here due to work problems. So we will be swearing him at another point. Mr. Callahan, please raise your right hand. Say aye, state your full name and repeat after me.
Aye, Fred Callahan III.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge according to law.
That I will faithfully discharge according to law.
My duties.
My duties.
As a constable for the town of Newington.
As a constable for the town.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So, thanks, so help you God.
Congratulations. At this time, that concludes the swearing in ceremony. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to the new mayor, Jonathan, John Trister.
Good evening, everybody. I want to start off tonight just with a few remarks. And I first want to congratulate everybody who was elected and reelected. It's a great honor to be here, and I'm really proud to serve with everyone here. I also want to again take some time to thank Mayor Del Bueno for her years of dedicated service to Newington. Regardless of elections or political affiliations, this is a volunteer role. And she dedicated 20 years of her life to serving Newington, and that is worthy of respect and admiration. So thank you, Mayor Del Bueno. A new day in Newington. Thank you to the voters of Newington. We were elected by a coalition of Democrats, Republicans, independents, and unaffiliated voters. A true representation of Newington. President Theodore Roosevelt, who was a Republican and also a progressive, famously said in his second inaugural address, "Much has been given us, and much will rightfully be expected from us." You can expect us to lead in a moral, honest, just, and transparent way because we recognize it is our responsibility as your elected leaders. I first got involved in politics and government because I wanted to help do service work that uplifts people in our community and makes their lives better. I strongly believe that if you are willing to put in the hard work, you can achieve anything, as evidenced by sitting here today. In that sentiment, I can't wait to get started on the important work we have ahead of us. Thank you. Now, we move on to considerations and take action on appointments to the council rules or procedure subcommittee. Right. All right. Resolved, the Newington Town Council hereby makes the following appointments, the Town Council Rules and Procedures Subcommittee. Matthew Plord, 258 Audubon Avenue. A.J. Tinakas, 129 Rosely Avenue. And Gail Bedraco, 21 Isabel Terrace. Can I entertain a motion? Second.
It's your motion.
On the paper? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. Moving on to appointments by mayor. At this time, we will be appointing a interim town attorney. We are in the process of meeting with several law firms that specialize in this. And unfortunately, a week was not enough time to get it together. So for the interim, we will be appointing David Griffith as town attorney. Until such time as we have a permanent option, which I expect to have by our next meeting or prior. Next, we are moving on to an appointment of clerk of the council. We will be reappointing Susan Given. And lastly, we would be, we will be making a designation of deputy mayor. And it is great, my great honor and privilege to announce Kim Rada will be our deputy mayor. If you'd like to change your name. All right. At this time, we will be moving on to public participation. Members are limited to four minutes. We will leave members on June 3. Oh, three minutes.
That's an old one. Now it's new.
Three minutes, there you go. Within the Zoom application, please hit raise your hand if you'd like to participate during public participation. If calling into a Zoom meeting, you may dial star to raise your hand to be recognized. Use star six when recognized to speak by telephone. State your name and address for the record. If anyone would like to speak, now's your time.
Good evening. Gary Bowles, 28 Burton Lane, lifelong Newington resident. I remember the day well. It was 6th July, 2015, when Stephen Clark was sworn in as our new police chief. The auditorium was packed with his family, friends, officials, and fellow police officers. After town clerk Lane administered the Oath of Office, we all gave Chief Clark and his wife a standing ovation. I quote, "Wow," Town Manager Salomon said after the thunderous applause died down. "I guess I made the right decision." "Are you all very good actors?" "I can assure you that our gesture was very genuine and heartfelt by all of us that truly knew Steve for his honesty, integrity, loyalty, and sincere dedication to his profession and the town." In his remarks, Steve told the Newington police officers, quote, "I'm here to support you. The only thing I ask in return is you stay true to your oath." The order by the ruling party of the previous town council to the current town manager to tell Chief Clark that he had to either retire or he had to fire him was heartbreaking to thousands of we Newington residents. The town manager, who would only have been here since July 1st, 2023, hardly had a chance to know Chief Clark, and the majority party seized upon that. All past town managers, Salomon, Lane, and Chaplin, who Chief Clark served under, gave him excellent, excellent reviews. There was mention of some disgruntled employees in the police department. But you know, that can happen in any workplace or environment. We all must abide by the rules and regulations. The treatment that Chief Clark received was nasty and hurtful to him and to all of us. I'm proud to stand with and by Chief Clark in his statement to Newington Life, and I quote, "I did nothing wrong." And I repeat, "I did nothing wrong." Lastly, congratulations to all of you as our leaders for the next two years as we yearn for truth, justice, and the American way. Thank you.
Go online. Mayor Beth Del Bueno, if you'd like. Mayor Del Bueno.
Hi, good evening. This is Beth Del Bueno, 327 Walsh Avenue. I just wanted to congratulate everyone there this evening on your election and wish you the very best over the next two years in executing your duties as councillors and as our new mayor. And I really just wanted to say congratulations, and I wish you all the very best. I had no intention of making a statement other than that, but just in relation to what Mr. Bowles said earlier, there was absolutely not ever an order given to the town manager regarding Chief Clark. And I just want to make that clear because I've heard that over and over, and that's just simply not true. And I am hoping that perhaps any other councillor might want to say that also, but that just isn't the case. In closing, just again, congratulations, and I wish you all the very, very best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Del Bueno.
Gary Turco, 98 Williams Town Court, State Representative for the 27th District. First mayor. Councillors of both sides of the aisle, congratulations. You've worked very hard on the campaign trail, talking to voters, residents of Newington. And they voted for all of you, having faith in you, to do your best job for our community. And I think, I'm pretty sure, 99% sure, that you all happen to be also residents of the 27th District that I represent.
You don't run against me if you want.
Me too. So I have to be extra nice to you.
The other means is, the other thing it means is you all have a very, a special place in my heart because as your representative on a state level, it's important for me to understand your viewpoints, understand what's important to you for Newington, what you would like to see the state do to help our community. And as councillors, I want to have a renewed relationship with this council. It's been a little distraught the last four years. I think we can do better on both sides of the aisle together. Open door policy. If you all have my cellphone, if not, I want to make sure you have it. Text me, call me, 365-247. And let's talk about how the state can work better to serve Newington, where we can invest more dollars in infrastructure projects, what grants are available. There are a lot more I think we can coordinate, working with the governor's office, working with the legislature, working with our Department of Transportation, Economic Community Development, Housing, and other departments, just to coordinate and do the best job for our community. So I'm really excited about that opportunity to do that with you all. And lastly, let me just mention, I know it won't happen overnight, but I have heard throughout the community, the concerns with the lack of transparency here in the town hall. And I trust all of you, again, this entire council, our mayor, to do everything you can to renew that faith in our residents here in Newington with feeling that this is an open government, a transparent government, a government people can trust that's working to the best of its ability to serve every single resident. And I've also heard from town employees, both from the unions and administrative positions, that have been upset on the way they've been treated. And I don't know all the details of all those situations, but they've come to me, they're state representative for help. So I ask all of you now in your new leadership role to work together, see what you can do to smooth out these situations for our town employees, who also, a lot of them are town residents, to have pride in their work again and feel like Newington is not just a great place to live, but a great place to work too. Again, I want to help you in all of this, in your efforts and being successful. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and I look forward to hearing from you all. One other attendee online who we're going to get to first. Phone number ending in 070. You're up.
Rose Lyons, 46 Alton Drive. To all you new members of the town council, you'll get used to hearing my voice and where I live. And if I had taken up the offer to get a ride to the town hall tonight, I would have been there to congratulate you in person, but I prefer the comfort of my couch at age 78. This is where I want to be. I don't drive at night. But the fact that it's not on NCTV, nor I heard it was not on YouTube either, I'm very disappointed that I wasn't there in person. But trust me, I will be there. I will be watching. And I have to say that the first speaker is a classmate of mine from the class of Newington High School the year 1963. I'd like to challenge those of you listening and those of you sitting there to start speaking to the council directly. Don't be talking on Facebook. You can talk all you want on Facebook, but nobody is going to make any changes on Facebook unless it's probably, you're going to get some people to come down to the town hall and speak to the town council. I don't think at 78 years old, I should be fighting the battles that I've been fighting the last few years for transparency and honesty. I have no problems with the previous town council. They're my friends. I see them on the grocery stores. I see them at church. I see them around town. I don't like the negativity that happens during election time. And I'm hoping that we can put that aside, come together. And as a few years ago, with the Democrats, they had someone put out, what happens when red and blue come together? It becomes purple. And purple was the color we used during that campaign. I want to see a blending of people at that table that have the true interests of Newington at heart. And I think we have the right group there now. So in closing, once again, I wish you well. I will be coming down, and I will be watching. Don't make me regret my vote. I'm hoping this is a whole new start. Thank you.
Thank you, Rose.
Evening, all. Dennis Maycall, 195 Camp Avenue. Congratulations to all of you. Nice to see all your faces here. And you've got a monumental task ahead of you that's left of you. And I hope for the people in Newington that you honestly open up your minds and hearts and listen to the concerns of each and every citizen. Because I have one that I've been fighting for a long time. And honestly, I just got nowhere with it. And it's, it's the widening of Camp Avenue. It's a big, big, serious safety issue. And it's time for us to put this to rest. It's got to get widened back to the original width. The street was narrow 30 years ago, and we still can't figure out why. It needs to be widened back. Everybody knows my, my play. I've been arguing for a long time. We did, we did a survey, and 91% of the people on our street want that widened back to the original. Only some people have the complaints that didn't want to have it done. So obviously, they need that, they want it done. And we need to have it for a safety issue. And we need to know that our fire trucks can get down it when we need them, and the police and ambulances as well. So I hope you address this sooner than later. We need to have this resolved. It's been going on far too long. The citizens on Camp give me their permission to be the representative, so to speak. So that's why I've been here so much. But we feel that something's got to be done. They keep moving on, moving on, moving on. It can't go any further. We've, we've been a long time waiting. So again, hopefully you listen to everybody that we have, that this concern is, is a serious one. Not just a fake one that we just want to make up because we want our street widened. It was once widened like everybody else. Being a narrow street in town is not the way we want to be. It's, it's, it's tough. So I appreciate your concerns. Good luck to you all. And hopefully, we'll be out of the future meetings that, that hope this is resolved soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public, either online or here in person, that would like to speak? Nope. All right, then we'll move on to remarks by councillors. Councilman Drake.
Councillor Drago.
Yeah, first of all, I want to say to everybody out in the audience and listening, I'm really honored to be here because, believe me, being on the council, it is a position of responsibility and trust, and I'm willing to commit, again, another two years to serve you in this community. And I'd also like to echo Mayor Trister by thanking Beth Delbuno for her leadership during her terms as mayor, but also her many years of service to Newington in several different capacities. She put in many long and demanding hours, all while trying to balance a full-time job and family commitments. And that takes an awful lot of dedication, and it was a privilege to work with you, Beth, if you're still watching. Just another thing I just want to say is that all of us chose to run for this office because we love Newington, and we're also concerned maybe about how it's going to be growing and evolving in the future. And the residents who elected us, they want the same things we do. They want to feel safe in the community. They want to be listened to. They want to be treated with respect. And they want a healthy place in which to live and in which to raise a family. And they put their trust in all of us here, and it's our responsibility to work together for the good of the town. And as a council, we are going to disagree on things, I guarantee it, and that's inevitable. But the diversity of opinion that we're going to experience on this council is just a reflection of the diversity of opinions within the town of Newington. But I'm hoping that when there are differences, that we're going to be able to work with the differences and work through the differences to reach some creative solutions and some creative decisions, all working towards a better Newington for all of us. So I'm looking forward to working with all of you and all of you out there, whether you voted for me or didn't. I'm going to do my best for the next two years, so thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Drago. Councillor Page.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to congratulate everyone who was elected and who is serving this fantastic town. It is indeed an honor and a privilege, and that's why I'm here, because it's my love as Councillor Drago. Drago said, "My love of the town and of all of you to serve here for another couple of years and do the very best I can." Also, while we're excited to have taken the majority as Democrats, that's a reality. We're very excited about that and we're very proud. I also want to tip my hat to our Republican colleagues and say, if I do the math, you'll correct me. I think, what do you have, 25, 30 years collectively experience on the council?
Near there, yeah.
That's a lot of experience. That's a lot of wisdom. I respect that. We all respect that. We will be tapping into that regularly, and so whether it comes to setting agenda meetings and respecting your desires in that regard, or nominations that you'll make to committees or boards or commissions, liaison appointments. We're going to be codifying some of that, hopefully in our rules as well, just to reflect the respect the majority will have for the minority of fully moving forward. That's one of the many things that we were called upon by the voters to do in the spirit of working together. And even the small things, I'd like to see us have the same name tag, maybe a white background with some other color lettering on the logo of the town. Sounds small. You might think that's trite, but rather than a red name tag and a blue name tag, I'd like to have us see if we can have the same name tag. I'd like us at the end of this ceremony to stand in front of our logo here, out in the hall, and take a picture together as a council, as a united council, not Democrats and not Republicans. And it's the small things, but it's also the big things, and yes, we will argue about policy. We will argue about budgets. We'll argue about what to do with our tax dollars. And those will be spirited debates, but I hope they're not transactional solely. There are some transactions we have to engage in, in the allocation of resources. I hope though those debates are driven first and foremost and always by our values, the values that drive us to do the very best we can for this town and that reflect your values. And so that's my commitment to you. I know it's the commitment of the mayor, and I'm certain it's the commitment of all of us. And I want to thank you all again. Thank you.
Councillor Page. Councillor Nagel.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't pretend to be as eloquent as the previous speakers. I do also want to say that I am very proud to be here tonight with this group and with this council, and appreciate all the efforts that everyone on both parties have put forth during this campaign. Obviously, I particularly want to thank Mayor Delbuno and those that have worked on the past council for the work that we have done, the positive things that we've done. I know you disagree with some of the things that have happened, but we will move forward in a positive manner. I want to mention that I didn't ask, nor do I remember the council asking, the past council asking for the resignation of Chief Clark. I know many of you believe differently, but as I see it, that is the truth. Unfortunately, Mr. Turco, I'm no longer in the 27th District. He redisturbed me. I'm on the other side of Willard Avenue. I think I'm the only one who is.
You could go get some.
Not, yeah, not in this district. Some of us on this council talked briefly at a get-together the other day about just that, being positive and working together and using the resources that we have, whether you've been on the council before or not. Indeed, I agree with that. For good or for evil, I've been on this council off and on for the past seven terms and will share my knowledge, be that as I remember it, with other council members. And I am open, obviously, to what you have to share with me. Times change, but sometimes there is wisdom from hearing from the past as well. So thank you all. Thank you all for being here tonight.
Deputy Mayor Rada.
I'm going to echo what many of you folks have already said. Congratulations to everyone, all of our elected officials. I want to thank those who have served in the past that I served with in my previous term. Thank you for re-electing me to a second term. I want to thank Mayor Trister for appointing me as deputy mayor, and I have a very good role model who is at the other end of the table, who I, we, I think we worked very well together, and I will be looking to you, and you are a model for me. Thank you. We, I feel that our community has given us all a mandate, and we have a responsibility. And I think every single one of us agrees. And Kathy, who I'm sure you're on Zoom, we were going to put a picture up here, but said no. That we are, we promise to work as civilly and collegially as possible together. That's the only way that work is going to be done. We will have civil and open discussion. I pledge that I will be available, that if you call, if you email me, I absolutely will get back in touch with you. And concerns that you might have, I will make sure through our mayor, through our town manager, through others, that your concerns, that your interests are funneled appropriately to the appropriate department, to the right person. We don't have all the answers. No one has all the answers, but we'll find out what we can for you, and we're going to point you all in the right direction. There's so many people here today, this is standing room only, as you can see. There are council meetings where maybe we have two or three people coming in person, maybe one or two people calling in or on Zoom. I would love to see these seats filled. This is your council. This is your town government. This is your community. And your voices are absolutely essential for us to be able to do the work that we want to do. So I'm hoping that we may not see as many folks here, but I'd like to see many more seats filled and many more folks coming and speaking and sharing your voice with us. I have worked with Gary Turco and Kate Farrar and Matt Lesser in the past as a councillor, will continue to do that, and I look forward to working with our state legislators and working collectively to make Newington the best new town that it can be. I'm looking forward to working with all of you, and I'm just excited that this is a brand-new term and that we've got work to do, and I think we're all ready to get down to that work. Thank you.
Councillor Floyd.
You said everything I was going to say and more. Yeah, I will, echoing so much of what has already been said, I'll start by saying that I also want to thank Mayor Delbuno and Councillor Camillo and Councillor Donahue for their service to our community. I am so excited to get to work with all of the incredible people at this table and all of the incredible people not at this table. Like Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Rada, said, "This is your council, period. This is your building. This is your body. This is your government." Every single decision that we make, every single action that we take, you is subject to your vetting, is subject to discussion with you, is subject to, in some cases on boards and commissions, your approval and your vote. Be involved. Be at these meetings, but also find out other ways that you can get involved. Because we need strong partners, and we had so many over the course of the past few months that are going to continue to stay involved, and that family can only grow. So again, I'm sincerely thankful for the opportunity to serve you all, as we all are. And I agree also with Deputy Mayor Rada when she says, "The mandate we received above all was a mandate of civility, a mandate to end division, a mandate to bring one another together in a sense of community that our community has thrived on for so long, but may have been lost, you know, over the past few years." And so anything that we can do, everything that we can do, whether it's the small gestures or the big ones, we will pursue those avenues to make sure that we can restore that sense of civility here in this town hall and in Newington. Thank you so much.
Councillor Tureyacos.
Hi, everyone. For the sake of time, just going to say that I'm super grateful and appreciate the town putting their trust in not only me, but the, my fellow councilman here. And then just wanted to echo that, please come talk to us. I put all my contact information online, but not everyone is online. And if you ask my fiancee, she'll tell you that I'm always running around. So feel free, if you see me in public, to stop me, have a conversation. We want to hear from you guys about how we can make the town better. So, you know, that's the only way it's going to get done. That's it.
My computer's not working. I don't think it's a plot. Everybody else's computer is working. Councillor Drago did sign in here, so raised my hand. But I just want to take a minute to thank Mayor Delbuno. It's hard to believe, but being a mayor is a hard job. And she's done it for four years, and she, she did the best she could, and she did a great job for our town. I also want to thank those, congratulate those who won the election, but also thank those who, who put their name forward and maybe not, not, didn't win. Running for election is a lot of hard work. And putting yourself out there to run for election is difficult. It's, it, you're on the line. You're out, you know, you're out visiting with people at the doors. You're, everything you say and do is then judged. But I'm glad there are people that are willing to come forward and run for election for bodies like this. And with, because without this, Newington goes no place. We need, we need people, good people to run, to serve on this council and the Board of Ed and to serve on boards and commissions. The good part of an election is, there's always, it's always over. I think I can see for all of us here on, at the table, that this has been a long, grueling election. We all have our Saturdays and Sundays and nights back now. We don't have to go knocking on doors and, and do press releases and all that stuff we do to get elected. And it's always also a new beginning, so we all start new. So it's a brand-new council. And how this council shapes up will be determined in the next couple of weeks, next couple of, maybe next couple of months. I can tell you from experience, getting elected is the easy part. Governing is the hard part. Because it would be nice if we could do everything that everybody wanted, but that's not always possible because some want this and some want this. And then we have to decide, the nine of us, where we're going to go, how the town's going to move forward. That's what we're elected for, to give our best judgment of how we move forward. We may disagree, but I always thought we could disagree civily, and we could disagree with knowing that we all have what's best for the town of Newington. Not maybe what's best for the loudest voices, but what's best for the entire town. And that's how I, I plan to spend my next two years, doing what's best for the town of Newington as a whole. So I just congratulate everyone who's, who's elected, both on the, on the council and the Board of Ed. You guys got the cheap seats. You got to sit out front. We'll come to one of your meetings, and we'll sit out on the cheap seats one day. And I hope my computer gets fixed, so I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.